Thank you all for being here. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. At this time, if you could all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, is there any public comment? Noting no public comment, we'll move on.
Oh, wait, we do-
We do have public comment, yes.
Hello, this is Mark Masur from the BLM. Just a few updates I wanted to share. I wanted to introduce our new Field Manager for Stillwater, Zach Reichhold.
Hi, everybody. My name is Zach Reichhold, as Mark just mentioned, and I am actually the permanent Field Manager for the Stillwater Field Office. So hopefully, we'll get to know each other and you'll see my face more often. I look forward to attending these in person. But in the interest of saving time and actually giving you the information that you need, I'll let Mark go ahead and brief you and not let you hear from guys who've been on the job for three days.
Yeah, just a few, I know we're limited in time in the public comment period, but a few of the most pertinent updates with BLM. So for San Canyon, our contractor is preparing to go do some baseline surveys related to botany, so we're hoping that there should be some action on that pretty soon. Our Wild Horse and Burrow EA, we'll hunt and gather EA. That is, we're working on the final EA. We have the expected final EA decision to come out in June, so coming up pretty soon. And then our geothermal lease parcels, I wanted to just mention that two of the parcels in Churchill County, well, one parcel and then another portion of a parcel was deferred. In the first parcel was deferred because it's in the Newmanui lands, and we need to set up a management plan for that, which has not been completed yet. That was something that happened in the NDAA legislation. And the second one, it overlaps with a pending conveyance to Churchill County, one of the lands that was selected for conveyance over to the county, so that one was deferred as well. Those are all the updates. You know how to reach us if you have any follow-up items to this, and we'll be sure to air a more thorough BLM updates for next year.
Okay, thank you for that update. We appreciate it. Is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll move on to verification or the posting of the agenda, please.
Pam Moore, for the record, the agenda was posted on May 15th. Between, the revised agenda was posted on May 15th between the hours of 2:00 and 5:00 at the locations listed on the agenda in court and Swiss statutes.
Thank you, Pam. Like Pam said, this is a revised agenda. We need to add additional revision with the removal of 6A, as those minutes are not currently ready. So can I get a motion for this agenda, please?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as revised with the additional revision of the removal of 6A.
It's, do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I have a second to motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Move on to our first appointment, 7A, Presentation of the 2025 Jim Regan Memorial Scholarship to the following individuals with the amount of the scholarship. Taylin Mayenez for $2,500, Amelia Jones for $2,500, Zoe McCorkle for $1,500, Jesus Sanchez for $1,500, Mathias Loop for $1,000, Cassie Pleasure for $1,000, and Kelty Kohler for $750. With that, I'll turn it over to County Manager Jim Barbie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll have you guys go on down for the presentation. Joe, could you give us a hand? Or Chris? Actually, Chris, could you mind? Duties as assigned. Thank you. Once again, we have the great honor for Churchill County to be able to present the 2025, the yearly Jim Regan Memorial Scholarships, and we thank Pam for all the hard work that she does every year in putting this together and managing it and making it happen. It really is her baby, and so we all appreciate that very much. So our first scholarship recipient is going to be Taylin Mayenez. If you can come forward, congratulations, $2,500. Congratulations, our next recipient, also for $2,500, Amelia Jones. Come forward. Okay. Next, with a scholarship for $1,500, Zoe McCorkle. Can they look? We'll keep rolling. Also, with a scholarship of $1,500, Jesus Sanchez. Congratulations. Congratulations. Recipient for $1,000, Mathias Loop. Congratulations. I think he's going to win the Height Award as well. Congratulations, also with $1,000, Cassie Pleaser. Did I get that right? Congratulations. Congratulations. And our final recipient with $750 scholarship, Kelty Kohler. Congratulations. We get all the kids up and we'll get one picture with everybody. Ann's very demanding in her photography. Congratulations, guys. And again, thank you, Pam, for your hard work on this.
Congratulations to all of you, and again, thanks, Pam, for putting this on. Move to 7B, Consideration and Possible Action, Approval of the Updated Churchill County Indigent Defense Plan. Who wants to take this one? Oh, Jacob's here. Never mind.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jacob Summer for the record. The updated plan should be in your packet. There's no substantive changes. It's just the differences between this year and last year reflect the new hire that we made for a deputy public defender and a couple of adjustments in terms of our current physical location. Everything else is substantively the same. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, but this is a requirement for the Department of Indigent Defense so that we can submit this. It's a yearly requirement, and so this is just that updated plan that I do every year. So, any questions?
Okay, thank you, Jacob. Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? A motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the updated Churchill County Indigent Defense Plan for 2025, 2026.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
7C, Consideration and Possible Action, Acceptance of Renewed Proposal from Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool and Approval of the Payment from Fiscal Year 2025, 2026 Funds. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Chris Ross for the record. So this item is for the approval for the renewal of the proposal from the Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool, or our pool. They provide the county with property and liability insurance. The proposal includes a summary of all the services and coverage that's provided to the county. This year, the proposal came in at a 2.53% increase over last year. To give you a frame of reference, the proposal we had last year was a 13.5% increase. That resulted in about a $19,500 cost over and above last year's. I did get together with Mr. Chris Roggney of EH Hurst and negotiated a reduction in the agency compensation, or the agent compensation. So the actual increase of the proposal is 1.1%, or an increase of $84, or just under $8,500 over last year. The cost to the county, or the county's portion is $6,435, and then the cost to CC Communications is just a little bit over $2,000. We do have a representative, Wayne Carlson, here from Pool Pact, as well as Chris Roggney from EH Hirsch. If you have any questions that I can't answer, I'm sure they would be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? A motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the renewal proposal from Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool and to approve payment from the fiscal year 25, 26 funds.
Mr. Chairman, a second to motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
7D, Consideration and Possible Action, Approval of a Fee Proposal for an Appraisal for Hypothetical Water Rights from Johnson Perkins Griffin LLC. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Joe Sanford for the record. Churchill County has a large quantity of both surface and groundwater rights. The valuation of those is always a term of contention amongst developers, as well as within the county when we are looking at whether we want to purchase land or water rights. Currently, we have relied on third parties to give us information about what water is going for. We watch sales through the district court when water goes through there, but we do not have a valid appraisal on which we could act to either purchase or sell water rights, especially during, I can't remember exactly how long, a couple months ago, we adopted an updated code that allowed for the dedication or payment in lieu of dedication of water rights, and this would set a value for that. They have requested $7,500 for an initial valuation and then $3,000 for each six-month updated valuation. We would have every six months because that's the statutory requirement to either purchase or sell a real property without having to go out and get another appraisal. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? A motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the appraisal agreement with Johnson Perkins Griffin as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. 7E, Consideration and Possible Action, Approval of a Letter to the Bureau of Land Management in Response to its Solicitation of Public Comment on the Blue Wing Complex Gather and Herd Management Area Plan Preliminary Environmental Assessment. Jim, are you going to take this one?
Yes, sir.
Check. Yep. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim Barbie, I'm standing in for Jeremy Drew. He had a conflict and was unable to make the meeting today. This is for possible action. This is a response to the communications from the BLM on the BLM Blue Wing Complex Gather, which they noted earlier in their presentation. As you can see, the attached agenda, we are looking for, or letter, I'm sorry, we are looking for approval of this draft so that we can go ahead and do final signatures and ship this to BLM as comment to this gather.
Thanks, Jim. Is there any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? A motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the comment letter to the BLM as proposed.
Mr. Chairman, a second to motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Move on to 8, Public Hearing, Budget and Tax Hearing for Fiscal Year 2025, 2026, Consideration and Possible Action, Approval of the Churchill County Final Budget and Tax Rate for Fiscal Year 2025, 2026. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sherri Whiteman, our comptroller.
Okay, I passed out the tax forms for the final budget, so we'll go through that now, and stop me at any time if you have any questions, please. I saw something. Try again, okay. You guys can roll it if you want. This isn't working. How'd it move? You guys? Can we please go back to the last page? One more? Okay, the NRS requires that we have a public hearing for our tax rate before June 1st and indicate any changes within the tentative budget, and I'll see if you guys want to approve it by majority vote, and then it's submitted to taxation. Next page, please. And so I'm going to go through the changes in the budget from the tentative that was passed out before to the final, and taxation has approved the tentative already, and we've had no changes from that to the final in our revenues. That includes CCCom as well. Next page, please. And this is, these are the changes from the tentative to the final. We had the negotiations with the deputies and sergeants bargaining agreement that increased the salaries and wages by approximately $200,000 and employee benefits by about $125,000. And I also put a placemark into our contingency fund of $180,000 to cover any kind of legislation for possible salary increases for elected and any other items that come through legislation. And that's as far as I could increase the fund balance for the expenditures for the general fund to keep the fund balance within regulations of the 4%. So the only thing that increased was the general fund by $506,000, approximately. Next page, please. Now, we want to go over the tax rate. Our tax rate since 2015 has remained the same. The county's is the 2.833, which doesn't all go to the county, and six, so in total, it's $6,366. And that's the same for this year because we're capped out and we can't go any further. Next, please. And this is how the taxes are allocated out. The general fund gets the .84, social services gets .065, senior center gets .06, ag extension gets .02, and the library gets .065. And that's how the general funds go through. Then we go down to the capital projects fund, which is 5%, and the next ones do not come to the county. They come to the county and we send them out. And then mosquito abatement still gets the .08, and the school district gets .75 for their operating, and that gets sent to the state. And then their debt service is .55, which they get directly. And then the state of Nevada gets their .17. And then the other agencies there, and then the city of Fallon. So that's our tax rate. There's been no changes. If we could go to the next page, please. And this just gives you a sample of what we get per $100,000 in rates of evaluations. Next page, please. And here's the same thing in graphed form. So you can see the various percentages of the tax rate that are given out. Again, this has not changed since the '15. There's been a little tweak between like the general fund and ag extension. Next page, please. So our overrides have not changed. Mosquito abatement hasn't changed, the school districts has not changed, and neither has the states. And there's just another picture of the tax rate. Next page, please. And these are the overrides. These are the ones that do not come to us. Well, we do get, we have like the fire rate is voter-approved, and that's on top of it, and that will be coming up, but not this year, though. Next. And there's a distribution of the school districts. They get the most, get the $1.30 between the two, debt service and the operating. Next, please. And just to give a little snapshot, this came out of our financial statements. This shows us the top 10 taxpayers in the county. That's just their valuation. That doesn't include abatements. Next page, please. And so we have to submit this by June 1st, and because it's a legislative year, we could change it prior, within 30 days of close of session. I'm hoping that the $180,000 placemark that I put in there will cover, so we won't have to go through and change it again, but we'll see how legislation pans out. And that's pretty much a summary of what's going on. I don't know if you need any recap as to some of the parts of the budget is, you know, what the coal is or anything, or you're all pretty much aware of what we've already approved. So let me know if you have any questions. Next page, I think it's just the end. Just asking you to approve this, or if you want to go back and change anything, we can do that. We have a little bit of time.
Okay, thank you, Sherri. Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? If none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final budget as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
Did anyone want to pull any letters received? Okay, we'll move on to Consideration and Possible Action, Update on the State of All Bills and then 2025 Nevada Legislature, and Support or Opposition to Any Bill That Has An Impact on County Government or the Citizens of Churchill County. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Joe Sanford for the record. We are coming to the close of the legislative session. This is sort of the period in time where all of the real work tends to get done. Bills are either going to make it or not. I've prepared a list for you. I'm going to run through all of the bills that I think are worth considering, either support or opposition from the county. I'll give you a little update. Some of them have been changed or amended since this list was made, and I'll give you an update on those as well. So AB 10, this is a bill that would allow the county to take over or create an improvement district for a private water or sewer system that's in an HOA. So this would be a situation where, say, an HOA has a private water or sewer system, the HOA is becoming defunct and it's not working. The county can come in and create an improvement district and create assessments related to that. Hopefully, we don't need that, but if it did happen, it would be a good power to have. AB 14, this is qualifications for elected officials to be registered voters within the state. AB 66, this is the provision related to district courts. This would expand Churchill County from one district court judge to a second. This particular bill, I think, does, if you do wish to either support or not support it, I would like a motion on this one that has come up several times as to the county's position on this bill because we are one of the most fiscally impacted areas. There was originally a large number of judges that were going to be added here, Carson City, Churchill County, and then several in Clark County and several in Washoe County. The Washoe County and Clark Counties have all been amended out, and so only Carson City and Churchill County remain.
Joe, real quick, is that one optional or no? I thought originally that bill was written so it'd be an option. If we decided that we wanted another district court judge, we could.
No, if this passes, there would be another.
Okay.
But Joe, for clarification, that's not immediate, right? That'd be a couple of years out.
Correct. This would come up at the next general election in 2026 for the election of a judge, and then they would take office January 2027.
And Joe, just for clarification, who funds that judge?
The state pays for the judge. The county pays for the support staff.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear on that.
All right, the next bill is AB 70. This would require the governor, or I guess the office of the governor, to consider comments from Board of County Commissioners when they're considering tax abatements. I know that's not always as forceful as we would like. There's been a number of bills that you'll see as we run through here that were designed to give counties a little more input in that process, and they almost all universally ended up about towards this, which was you're allowed to submit comments and request some type of community benefit plan, but it's all going to come after an abatement is approved, and it would all be voluntary, I guess would be the best term. But still, this is better than where we're at now, which is we just don't get any say at all. AB 104 is one of the major water rights bills, the most important impact in this one is creating plans for water right retirement plans. They currently don't have any funding associated with the retirement. The plan would be for the state engineer to go out and request grants to fund some of this water right retirement, and essentially, this is going to create the vehicle for that to exist. So far, all of those have made it out of committee, and so they're all looking fairly likely to pass. AB 108, this is an appropriation to the Outdoor Education Recreation Grant Program. These funds would likely come to counties in the form of grants or subgrants from the state. Currently, this is exempt. As you all may be aware, the legislature and the state are in a, I guess, a financial pickle in terms of how much money they would like to spend and how much they actually have. And so a large number of these bills that had fiscal impacts are not looking like they're going to make it out, including this one. Same thing for AB 127. This would provide grants from the state to counties to implement language access plans, translation services, and things like that for all of our forms. Again, it's exempt. No action has been taken on it at this time while they work out the budget. AB 128, this was the creation of the Office of Public Records Ombudsman, which is really just more state involvement in public records. Fortunately, this has been amended and gutted almost entirely to become a task force and committee of recommendations instead of actually creating this office. So I guess it's board's pleasure at this point. It doesn't actually have an immediate impact. AB 131, this was a property tax abatement for accessory dwelling units. It has been amended substantially as well, mostly to change from all accessory dwelling units being per se exempt from property tax to now only tenants who are receiving federal assistance for a full year and living in a accessory dwelling unit qualifying it for an exemption, so the impact is substantially less. AB 133, this is, this is the bill to give the treasurer the ability to collect technology funds from excess proceeds, which we have supported. I would note, there was an additional clause added by amendment that says the clerk treasurer's office cannot close earlier than 5:00 PM, which currently doesn't have an impact to us, but I'll let Linda speak to if that's going to be an issue of any to us. AB 174, this is an exemption for telecommunication providers, including CC Communications, where if someone is requesting to receive telephone service, currently, CC Communications is the provider of last resort in Churchill County, and so no matter where you are in Churchill- And so no matter where you are in Churchill County, if you request telephone service, they have to essentially find a way to provide that service for you. And this would allow CC Communications in that situation to consider whether an alternative via satellite was in existence. And if that was in existence, then they could choose that option instead of having us build a very expensive line out there. Not that it would necessarily happen, but it's an ability for the provider to request that in certain circumstances. AB two eleven is requested for support. This is a bill related to substandard housing located within the county. And once it's become identified, the ability of the county to become involved to either take over the property and, I guess, assist tenants in relocating and condemning and abating the nuisance and resolving any issues related to this. We have had this issue come up a couple of times for manufactured housing developments, which I don't believe this bill would actually fix for us, because that's under the state. But there are a number of potential substandard housing issues, burned down homes or partially burned down homes or trailer parks that this could fall into. And this would expand the ability of the county to become involved and effectuate needed assistance in that case. AB two twenty-six, this was something that we had encouraged. It was an ability for, at the time an abatement plan was being determined, to require that the tax abatement include a community benefit plan, which would require essentially some action on behalf of the company receiving the abatement to be active in the community and provide benefits. It has been gutted by amendment, and now it is, again, essentially voluntary. They still have to make a plan, but the plan has no teeth. And it only has to be submitted two years after they receive the abatement. So I don't expect it to have a whole lot of effect. But it is a step, at least in the direction, towards doing something. AB two forty-one, this was a very interesting bill related to theoretically solving the housing shortage, where by right, a residential or multifamily housing use must be allowed in commercial districts. It has passed out of committee. And the only change has been that it now allows us to set certain conditions associated with the multifamily housing, so like setbacks and things like that. But this would be potentially very concerning in terms of the ability of a developer to say, well, I found a piece of commercial ground. And they may actually have the ability to build multifamily housing there easier than they could in districts where multifamily housing is supposed to exist. There is a very strong support for this bill from housing shortage groups. And so although many planners submitted comments about this essential concern, it is looking like it is going to pass. AB two forty-five, not necessarily county-related, but it prohibits persons less than twenty-one from having a semi-automatic shotgun or a semi-automatic rifle. Currently, that's eighteen, so this just bumps that age up. Which has, I mean, in addition to just the Second Amendment concerns, has some issues for enforcement from our folks who are, you know, always trying to figure out how old people are or whether they're entitled to be using those or whether it's a crime. And so we receive reports on these kinds of things all the time. AB two forty-seven is recommended for opposition. This is not, I think, a theoretically bad bill. It's, the intention is to ensure that persons with physical disabilities, specifically hard of hearing, be provided with real-time translation services at public meetings. Unfortunately, while we would, while we would do that right now upon request, this bill, the way I read it, would suggest that you would have to do that for every single public meeting, whether it's requested or not, which for county commission-type meetings isn't much of a big deal. We can set that up, but we have a large number of public meetings that are held off-site in small rooms with little or no technology available. And potentially, that could cause substantial costs to us to either start booking everything in this room or setting up multiple sets of this type of equipment all throughout the county. AB two forty-nine is suggested for support. This just changes the fiscal note process for local governments. Currently, we are required to submit fiscal notes within eight days of receipt. This would allow us to extend that to fifteen days if the matter requires some extensive research, which could be very beneficial to us, because by the time we receive it, sometimes it takes two or three days before we know that we're looking at that particular bill. And then deadlines get pretty tight and they turn into cannot-be-determined or unknown fiscal impact numbers instead of hard numbers. AB three oh seven, this was related to excise taxes on the wholesale sale of cannabis, which we only had concern with, because this was the portion of the tax that would come to the county instead of the state. It has not been heard and is looking like it'll likely die, but potentially could be heard at the end of, by the end of next week is when all of these things have to be ready for vote. AB three twenty-six, this is provisions for the designation hospitals and centers for treatment and trauma. This is Greg Koenig's bill, which would be beneficial for rural counties. Unfortunately, it's been amended to change from an actual designation to just a study on what this designation could do. But at least it's still alive and looking to pass in that form. AB three sixty-three is the establishment and membership of groundwater boards. This is designed for counties, like our basin, which has multiple counties associated with it, to get together, get a list of names together of people who are impacted, water right users, to make recommendations to the state engineer on pumping curtailments or methods of managing our groundwater. And mostly, it gives the county commission a lot of authority in relation to the creation of these boards, which could be better than the state engineer just doing it himself. AB three seventy-seven, this is the adoption of a form by the Nevada Tax Commission at the declaration of value stage to allow you to request at that time whether you're going to have a partial abatement of taxes. Potentially, this could reduce some of the duplicate forms when people are already coming in and recording these documents. And it's been supported by NACO and everyone else, so hopefully less paperwork for our staff. AB three eighty-eight, this was our largest remaining fiscal note. This is the paid family medical leave provisions. Currently, it's not scheduled for a hearing in the Senate. And our meeting with the sponsor of this bill was canceled. And so I'm not sure if that means that it's just dead and no one's working on it anymore or they didn't care about our opinion and it's going to get crammed through at the end. So one of those two things, we're, I think, hoping that it will die just because the impact is very substantial to the budget. AB four fifteen, this is revising the provisions related to junk certificates for cars that are towed. When we have a vehicle that ends up abandoned on our public property, the process of getting it towed and sold is actually quite complicated, because currently, the amount of money that the person receives for junking the vehicle is sometimes less than their cost of towing it. And so we've had a very difficult time actually getting someone to come and tow it. And they've required that the county pay to do that tow, whether or not it gets junked or not, which is just an additional cost to the county. AB four sixty-two, this is an interesting bill related to the creation of industrial parks and provisions related to industrial parks. The concern that I've seen with it is that it links industrial parks to inland ports. Currently, there are no inland ports in the state of Nevada. As you're aware, we've had substantial interest from IRG to become an inland port. There's some negatives associated with that related to the ability of the county to control development in those situations. And so I think the concern in this case is that potentially industrial parks aren't going to be allowed unless you also allow an inland port. AB four seventy-nine, this is provisions related to taxation of agricultural property that's used for agrivoltaic purposes, which has basically has come to mean has solar associated with it. It's been amended slightly to require that the property already be in agricultural use by July of this year to potentially qualify, which limits the impact substantially, because we aren't talking about someone going out and building a solar plant like Sierra Solar out in the desert, where it's not being used for agricultural purposes. And then at the end of their twenty-year regular abatement, saying, well, it's conservation-ag, and so now we want to be taxed as an agricultural use. That being said, I still think that this is not nearly defined well enough to really understand what the potential impacts associated with this are going to be. You know, in terms of actual agrivoltaic use, you know, I'm sure Commissioner Ghetto knows more than I do in terms of how prevalent that is. But this seems like mostly a bill related to solar facilities getting a tax abatement after their tax abatement. AB five oh two is a bill related to public works. This is related to, I mean, it's got a lot of pieces. Our concern with it was that before the county was allowed to publish or go out for bid, they had to receive a public works number at least ten days before they published, which potentially, if we had a need for something to be done in a timely fashion, adds ten additional days. That has been amended down to three. So it's at least better, and is probably around the range that we would be looking to do it anyway. So I no longer have a great deal of concern with this bill. Sorry. AB five oh nine, this is a bill related to allowing taxation on telecommunications and broadband providers for the use of our right-of-way. It would require, now by amendment, that we provide non-discriminatory access, which we generally do anyway, and would allow a fee of up to two percent of gross revenue. This is potentially beneficial to us in the event that somebody like CC Communications can recoup a large number of these costs inside of its cost study. Same with other providers. And so we would be receiving essentially some amount associated with this. It is entirely discretionary. We wouldn't have to pass this if we wanted to, just if it became something of interest. AB five twenty-eight, this is another property tax abatement bill. This was related to granting further abatements for buildings that met certain green energy standards, which could potentially be very impactful. Currently, it's not scheduled for another hearing. And so it's looking like it is not going to make it out of its second committee. AB five forty-seven, this is, this is somewhat interesting bill, given, I think, what's going on at the federal level. But it's been introduced to require the state to consider experience of federal employees equivalent as if they were state employees for terminations on hiring. It also removes the ability to require a bachelor's degree for hiring decisions, except in very specific circumstances, like accounting for accountants, et cetera. Our concern is that typically, just like with the FMLA pay bill, things that are required of the state have a way to trickle down towards the local entities in the next session. And so that is our concern associated with this. Obviously, local government and our experience is not always equivalent to federal experience. Not that we couldn't count it, it's just that this bill would require us to consider it as equal. SB thirty-six, this is, again, a water right buyback bill. Currently not scheduled for an additional hearing. And my understanding is that it's been essentially combined with AB one oh four that we discussed before. SB sixty-nine, this is recommended for support. This is Story County's bill related to industrial development and property tax abatements at their essentially trick centers, especially related to data centers. They're doing a lot of the things that potentially will be coming our way soon and dealing with those issues upfront, which is potentially good for us. SB ninety-three, this would require that any state or federal grant within the state that goes to create or implement a broadband service or infrastructure must pay prevailing wage, which currently we do not. This potentially is going to vastly increase the cost of performing infrastructure work for CC Communications Charter or any other broadband provider in the state. Federal money usually does not contemplate these costs. And so it may impact our ability to actually provide the service. Currently, much of our matches will be, say, twenty-five percent on most federal grants. And so if it's hard at twenty-five percent and they aren't accounting prevailing wage, this could potentially be, basically make almost all federal grant operations infeasible.
Joe, just to be clear, that, that would be for grant money that's already been awarded as well?
The way I'm reading it, yes.
I mean, that would potentially halt any, I mean...
So there's a, there's a provision in there for potential, potential savings on issues where the federal grant will not compensate or where it would reduce the ability to receive money. But considering that likely it won't actually reduce the amount of the grant, it will just incur additional expenses on the provider, I don't believe that that will, will save our current existing grants. So we'd better have to start building soon. That has passed the committee, and so it's looking like it will, it will eventually pass. SB one sixteen, this provides, this is the elected county officer pay bill. No further amendments since the last hearing. It has passed out of both committees and will be going to the floor for a vote sometime next week. I'm almost done, I promise. So SB one seventy-three, this is, this is a bill regarding the sale or disposition of certain foodware, recyclable plastics, bags, all of that kind of thing, which not only is potentially impactful to the economy, but also just very unclear on who was going to be responsible for actually enforcing the use of certain types of food service delivery bags, whether that was supposed to be the county or some state department. In the event that it's the county, it could be potentially quite expensive. Currently, that's not scheduled for a second vote, and so hopefully that will just die. SB three oh three was originally a good bill, with the intention being to limit civil liability for persons who allow recreation on their private property. The downside is, when they were making those changes, they removed the immunity for public... The downside is when they were making those changes, they removed the immunity for public parks from that same civil liability, and so potentially we could have liability for gross negligence or something like that for someone getting injured at one of our parks that currently we have absolute immunity for. SB 364, this is another property tax abatement for parks associated with railroad tracks or railroad spurs. Again, this is just another piece of the property tax abatement plan, which could impact us significantly, given our rail access. SB 390 is, I guess, just a DA's office bill. This is related to child support enforcement. Currently, when we enforce child support, when we have a non-paying parent, one of our primary methods of ensuring compliance is driver's license suspension. You know, prior to that, it's mostly letters and, you know, wage garnishment and things like that, but if they're not working or working under the table, it can be hard to gain any form of enforcement. Driver's license suspension gets, I don't want to say a majority, but a large number of non-paying people to come and at least interact with our office and start a payment plan. Unfortunately, if this bill were to pass and that option were to go away, our next option is criminal enforcement. Nonpayment of child support is a crime, but prosecuting a crime like this is, one, expensive, and, two, it's not generally appreciated by either our courts or our law enforcement officers, probation, parole. You know, when we put someone on for an offense like this, they are of limited interest in helping us enforce these orders. And so that particular win bill could potentially reduce our collections, which is also related to our child support incentive dollars. SB 423, this is the health district and health funding bill. Originally, it was 30 million, and I think it got down to 10. Given, again, the particular fiscal situation over at the legislature, I'm not sure that this will actually have any money associated with it at any, some point, but potentially allows for funding to all of the health districts and health and human services entities within SB 434 is creating an account to essentially try and get additional healthcare providers to come into the state, especially in rural areas, by providing them grants. Again, it's a fiscal note, and so we'll see how that goes. SB 447, this is related to public works. It gives a contractor on a public work who is in a dispute with the public body the ability to go to court and essentially get additional fees and costs associated with us if, even if our contract says that we're in a dispute and we're going to have a process to follow it. This would allow them to circumvent that, which potentially increases our costs associated with public works, especially in a situation where we have a contractor that we are not SB 457 is recommended for support. This is the governor's crime bill, public safety bill. It's got a lot of very good provisions, at least from the prosecutor's view, but a lot of it is very no-nonsense legitimate needs to address some of the major issues that are going on within our communities. I don't expect it to pass, given our legislative makeup, but it is actually a very good bill. SB 461 is the governor's economic development bill. Mostly, it continues the ability of the office of the governor to continue to work with their tax abatement program, to try and relocate businesses within the state. Not much of an expansion compared to the existing provisions, but has some good abilities to at least work on getting people to come to the state, and we may need his help on a lot of other issues, so. That is it.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Is there any questions, comments, concerns for Joe? Any, anything from you guys?
I understood Mr. Sanford that he'd like to have some kind of action on maybe AB 66. There's a couple others, or a few others that I think we need, I would like to have further discussion if you guys would think we should do a letter of support to. And I have a couple that we might want to consider doing an opposition letter to if you want to entertain that.
Yeah, let's see what you've got.
Mr. DA Sanford spoke to do some kind of support for AB 66. I would like to do that. And AB 70, AB 211, AB 226, AB 249, AB 326. And then Senate Bill 69 is the ones that I show, I'd like to talk about or supporting. And then I have a couple that do we want to create some kind of opposition for, which would be AB 245, AB 388, Senate Bill 303, Senate Bill 390, and Senate Bill 447. That's my thoughts and what I would like to discuss.
Okay, I think one of the biggest ones on here is going to be AB 66, and that's the one that Joe wanted. That's District Court Judge, that's the one that he was wanting an answer on most definitely. I have my concerns with that. Is that doubling District Court? I mean, I think we'd all agree that, you know, Judge Stockard's current caseload is, I don't want to say atrocious, but he does a lot. He's very, very good at what he does, but he does a lot. My concern is by supporting AB 66, that locks us in that we have to get a District Court judge at the next cycle, 2026. And that, and I've never looked at the exact math, but budget-wise, that is basically duplicating, doubling the staff at District Court. So I have my concerns on that, because that ties us in, I mean, that locks us in on having to get another judge.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Jim Barby, for the record. I've had comment, or conversations with Judge Stockard, and he feels that that will create an additional needed three positions that would then work, and this was kind of some of that conversation we had around the Justice Court and some of that earlier in the year as we were doing the budget building, that basically that would, this would create an increased need of three positions, and then those positions would be kind of pooled together, not kind of, would be a pooled together clerks' court kind of office that would be managed as one group and would basically facilitate, as I understood it back then, so don't, no guarantees, and we would have time to work through this, but basically would service two District Courts and the Justice Court, or two District Court judges and the Justice Court, with each one of the judges having their own, what's the correct title, court or...
Court administrator.
Court administrator directly to the judge, and then the rest would all be pooled. So it wouldn't double, but it would for sure increase, and he's guessing that it would be a necessary for an additional three positions.
And then on top of that, one of my other concerns is space and availability of that building, the current District Court building.
You would basically be committing to moving forward with a new courthouse?
And that number is still around $28 million?
Correct.
So we'd have two years, or one year, to come up with $28 million. So those are my concerns, and again, if you, I think everyone agrees that we would need another District Court judge. I just don't want the state to be able to force us into it when that time comes. I'd like us to be able to do it on our own doing. I think it'd be very, very easy to go back on a next future legislative cycle and say, hey, we want another District Court judge, and I'm sure they'll be more than happy to approve it then. I just don't want to be locked in right now, and we're not even prepared for it.
I understand your concerns. Refresh my memory, you did say that more than likely this bill would pass regardless if we opposed or supported?
I suspect if we opposed, they would amend us out. That's just my guess. I don't want to speak to it, but I think that if our county said that we did not want it, they would remove us from the bill.
Okay, all right. And the District Court Judge has made it very clear that he is understaffed, correct?
Overkiced. Yeah, not understaffed, overkiced. I think the numbers that have always been kind of thrown around is that he has one of the highest caseloads in the state of Nevada, and I'm not arguing that, I agree with that, but again, this just locks us into a certain date, and that's what scares me.
And I think three positions, I mean, we could figure that out, but a new courthouse, we might not be able to figure that out right away, but do we, is it confirmed that we have to have another courthouse if this position was created, or is it just a nice-to-have courthouse?
We've toured the facility before. There is another courtroom in that building, and I wish Judge Stockard was here to be able to better explain it. There's one, it'd be extremely challenging with the building that is there now and the setup of that building to have trials in that other courtroom. It's, I don't think it was ever designed.
Mr. Chair, Jim Barby, again, for the record, I've been bathed in this topic for seven years that I've been here. It is definitely necessary. If you're going to have a second District Court judge, you're definitely going to have to have the new courthouse, because the existing secondary room will not facilitate the necessities of a District Court, fully operational District Court judge, second one. So you would definitely have to expand, or you would have to liberate Justice Court at different times and have both of those kind of going at the same time, three and two kind of situation, but it would be a, it would be a big struggle. It's a necessity, and even with the, I would just point out, as you guys are aware, I'm not telling you anything new, but with the District Court hearings that we have in there currently and Drug Court, there's real limitations in terms of safety on the existing District Court. So you double that load, and it's going to be significant.
You know, I could totally support this if it was at our leisure, if they would pass a bill that said, hey, you counties are eligible for a District Court judge. At your leisure, you can do that. Is that a, a letter?
I mean, we could ask, I mean, my expectation is this being, I guess, proposed by the Supreme Court, they're the ones pushing this, that they probably won't give up that sort of power, you know, because it's their push, but I don't see any reason that we couldn't reach out to the bill sponsor and ask.
Because I don't know that we can get there in two years.
I don't think we can get there in two years, and that's my concern. And then you just gave, if we support it, you give the state of Nevada the power to come after us because we didn't abide by it.
If we wrote a letter of support in our favor, maybe, that would be the only way, right? Like at our, like you said. Or we don't even write an opposition letter, we just let it stand.
I mean, I'm sure every county's in a different situation that this bill affects, but we're not in a situation where we're ready.
In my opinion, it just needs to be opposed. Again, I think if you wanted to go back on the next legislative cycle, just like Joe said, this is kind of being pushed from, I don't want to say higher-ups, but the higher-ups in the state of Nevada, I'm sure they'll happily entertain it at a later date and say, yes, we do want another District Court judge, you know, can we get a bill together for that? I'm sure they would put one together for us at a later date. Again, my concern is that this locks us into 2026 and having to hit the ground running, come up with $28 million, build, construct a whole entire new courthouse. I mean, we'd have to start months ago.
And just to note clarity of where we are on the court project, that has fully been designed and laid out, and we've been moving towards steadily each year, doing a project towards the new construction, with the most recent being the remodel of the first floor of the old or existing District Court building from the old jail to the evidence locker and storage, so that the idea is that we would move forward this year and drop the old sheriff's substation that's right next door and start preparing that ground for construction and start looking at funding sources, whether through USDA or other low-interest-rate municipal funds, to start construction on the courthouse over the next 12-month-ish, has been the ongoing slow-walk plan. Part of that has been hoping that we would see interest rates drop. So the bill isn't necessarily out of line, and I'm looking at my public works guys to make sure I'm not getting over the tips of my skis in what I'm saying. The bill is not out of line with the timeline that we've been pursuing in construction of a new courthouse, just in terms of, I'm not trying to sway you one way or another because I think what you're saying is valid, but just to be clear.
Do we have any funds set aside that's solely dedicated for that, or maybe just on idle?
We do have cash set aside as part of this project. That's all kind of changed, I don't want to say changed, but we're mindful of that as we look at the constraints in the economy, as we've been putting forth, you know, you guys are all aware of that, I mean, this is not new ground.
Okay.
And our current bill is built for another judge, so, the way I understood it.
The current plan design is for two District Court judges, correct? Two upstairs, separate, large courtrooms that would facilitate the modern needs of
I think if we wrote an opposition letter, then that might create us problems down the road.
How so?
Like if we wanted to come back and ask him for another judge, you know, I'm just wondering if it would. We could have the DA maybe find out the opinion of, does it matter if we take Commissioner Hyde's thoughts and put them into a letter and see if that has any weight?
Is there enough time for that, Joe? I don't think there's enough time for that.
So this will be, I guess, voted on next, by next Friday, so we could address that. I mean, I've had personal conversations with Judge Stockard about what it would look like in the time before the courthouse was built, and he didn't have as many concerns, but I don't want to speak for him, and so I'm going to suggest that if he, I know he's mentioned it before on our tours, but I just don't know exactly what that would look like in terms of timing, as to your concerns on whether, hey, if this courthouse took five years instead of two years, what does this look like and what is his opinion on that? As far as reaching out to the sponsor and drafting a letter to say, look, you know, this is our interest and our concern related to when this could be done, potentially would you be open to an amendment that, you know, allowed the county commission to adopt, you know, the creation of the second judge?
And just additional comment relative to the timeline of construction, and I'm looking at Randy. It's my understanding that if this were to go through and then we were handed at Public Works a deadline of January of '27, which would be when this judge seat would be seated, could we have the building built? That's basically two years, I would think, yes. It'd be pushing, but I mean, it would be around that timeline, enough so that you...
It's a year and a half.
Yeah, but enough so that, but I mean, all of those things are in place. We've been moving steadily towards, it's not like, oh crap, we got to create a District Court judge plan. That plan started back and was underway in 2018 when I was hired. So, you know, maybe it's two years out and would be the summer of '27 before it was fully opened or something like that, but I think it's reasonable to assume. Now with that, right, is the investment. That's a different conversation. I'm just talking in terms of physical timeline of what could be accomplished based on what we've currently done.
It's definitely unsafe to have two District Courts in that, in the existing courthouse, we determined that, sure. Maybe we just do as less as possible and let this play out the way it plays out, and then just make, getting a courthouse... then just make, getting a courthouse an extreme priority in the near future to figure out the funding and get a plan in place, you know, we could think about it that way, too, I guess.
I'm, I'm pretty well set on opposing that bill. It's an unfunded state mandate is what it comes down to. I mean, not explicitly, but when you come, when you look at it, that's actually an unfunded state mandate. So I'm pretty well opposed to that, and not a small unfunded state mandate. That is a huge, again, a year and a half, so maybe you do have it, maybe it's the summertime, sure, but you are mandated by the state, January 2027, to have the second. Years, again, I just like the option of us being able to do it on our own terms. I don't think there's enough time to write a letter. I think you're better off to oppose it now, and then when the time comes, we go back to them and say, we would like another District Court Judge, please write us a bill, we are ready for it.
I understand that, and then I'm still new to this, so I don't know what opposing really means down the road. Is it just opposing this specific bill and only this specific bill, and then tomorrow we can change our mind and write a new letter and says, hey, we want a courthouse?
You are simply opposing AB 66 for this legislative cycle? The next legislative, legislative cycle, it's not, you know, oh, they opposed it last year, it's a whole entire brand-new thing, all new hearings, you have different people elected, I mean, it all changes each legislative cycle. So just in my opinion, and Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, opposing a bill now isn't going to come back and bite you later.
Unless there's no funding.
Unless there's no funding, but there's no funding anyway.
It, it could, but, you know, I, I would suggest if you want to take a stance like that, you would, here, here would be my suggestion, is that you take a stance of neutrality and you note in the letter of neutrality that you have great concerns based on the most recent economic data on whether the county would be in a position because of the current high interest rates to move forward with the $28 million courthouse construction and the potential challenges it could cause, because ultimately, if you got the second District Court Judge and you added the three staff, right, that isn't a ginormous expense, it's the courthouse. If you had to go in the meantime, even for six months, waiting to get the courthouse completed, you're probably looking at committing the commission chambers for part of the, the need to hold District Court stuff, because it's going to take a room, it's going to be more of the size and more of the setup, and that's probably, and, and we went through this during COVID and what facilities we could use and how they could be used, and reasonably, it would probably be this room in the current existing District Court, and so there would be some, some real challenges for sure. So that would be my suggestion, is, is that you would stay neutral, but note your concerns. Then your, your concerns are aired, but you're not putting yourself in a conflicted position with anyone. What would be your thoughts on that, Joe?
I, I mean, I have similar thoughts. I think that a neutral position with a fiscal note and concern about the fiscal note is, is appropriate. I will just address, I, I think there's a little, I don't expect that getting additional judges is going to be as easy as we think, because it's a state cost. So these, this is a big political push for them to have gotten this done. It doesn't happen very often, and so this year there is that political push, and I'm not saying they wouldn't, because I know the Supreme Court is very supportive of Judge Stockard's need for additional people. I just don't want to create an impression that next legislative session, they would do it for us. I mean, they might, we'd certainly ask Greg to sponsor a bill for us. But it may not be as common. I, I know several districts have been asking for a while and then not getting them. So that's, I think the only concern I would have is, you know, it's a push and pull with the state where they're, since they pay the judge, they have a fiscal impact, and they believe parole and probation said they had about $150,000 impact for our court, which of course is vastly inflated, but they can come up with large numbers that could make it difficult for us to get a second judge. I'd like to believe that if they were open to it this year, that they would be open to it in two years when our courthouse was built, too. But I don't want to promise that.
I understand where you come from, that it could be, you know, they're telling us what to do and when to do it, so, and we know it's not plausible. So I understand that, but I don't want to, I'm worried about down the road if we did oppose it. So I'm, I'm not in favor of writing an opposition letter. I'm, I'm more in favor of writing a neutrality letter with Commissioner Hyde's comments that he structured there to be in, put into the letter, is, is what I would think would be a good position for me. Sort of keeps our options as open as possible without commit, without committing to something.
I can't, how many, what, refresh my memory, what counties are affected? Clark?
Currently, it's just Carson City and Churchill County. Clark County, I think, had like eight that they were looking at, ran into a similar position where they were going to have to build courthouses for it, and similar with Washoe County. And so they got pulled from it because their county said that we weren't going to pay for courthouses. So currently, it's just Churchill County and Carson City receiving additional judges.
I have the same concerns Joe has about kicking the can down the road, but we're, we're pressed into a corner, we can't. So I'm, I'm kind of in favor of neutrality with our concerns.
My only concern with neutrality with our concerns is that, to what note are they going to heed them and actually listen to our concerns? Generally speaking, they really don't listen to rurals very often, so.
Well, if we're, if we're on pace to do our, you know, new courthouse, if we're going to move forward that, and we're, maybe we're a year after it, and we got to have our District Court Judge be in the old courthouse, or, you know, we, we can't keep kicking the courthouse down the road too much further either.
No, we, I, I think we all agree with that, it's just a matter of, that time is a year and a half away. Can we get everything done that we want to get done? In my opinion.
I'm not so much worried about the new courthouse being done in a year and a half. I'm concerned about our facilities facilitating two judges currently. And if we can do that in a safe, productive manner. It might take two and a half years to build the courthouse, but we might have to make do with what we have till then. When I get the numbers of the caseload of Judge Stockard, it is alarming. It's significant, and he is good at what he does, but that's a lot. And I, and I agree, Miles, I hate unfunded mandates. They just keep coming. And I spent 10 years on the school board, and they just keep coming with no money attached. But this, it's needed. Some of the unfunded, and I know you, you agree with it, it's needed. Your, your, your hangup is on the timeframe, and same with my hangup. But sometimes we just have to suffer through the timeframe. Of the overwhelmed. I don't know, you, we go on our tour of the courthouse, man.
I, yeah, it's, it has to change. I think we're all in agreeance with that. It's just my only, again, my biggest concern is that January 2027, we have a District Court Judge, and we have, I'm not going to say no plan, and we have a year and a, year and a half, I guess, to plan for it, but it's not going to be easy. Versus, in my opinion, you know, you oppose it now, we continue to work towards building our courthouse, and when that time comes and we have the ribbon cutting, we take pictures, and you can send them off to whoever you want and say, look, we just built a brand-new courthouse for two full courtrooms for two District Court Judges, please give us another District Court Judge, we are ready for it. Versus us scrambling in the next year and a half, trying to figure out how we're going to make this work, how it's going to fit, where people are going to go, how we're going to get financing for it. And again, we, we have that money set aside, and that's, we all agree on that, and we all know that, but do you want to commit in a year and a half to have to come up with that money in that time period?
Well, at some point, that money is going to become moldy. At some point, at some point, we got to get moving on it. So maybe this is the push.
Well, again, on the courthouse piece, the, the only real drag that we've had has been watching interest rates. We knew we were going to have to take a loan out on, on part of it. Again, that's been part of the plan, and I think for some amount of time, you know, we're, we're pretty resourceful lot, and we could come up with a plan to, to make things work ultimately. I do know what Joe is suggesting, you know, that if we come out in opposition on this, it could poison the well a bit moving forward with Supreme Court, and, you know, it's, it's, it just, it's not ideal, right? It would be a lot, feel a lot more confident if we were back in 2% interest rates for governmental entities through USDA. And of course, then, again, that's part of this conversation, the, the landscape has changed, the landscape has changed federally in terms of these grants and awards and low-interest loans. So, you know, it, it's, it's fair that we would have concerns that we didn't even have when the session started today versus earlier. So I continue to say you're personally, I'm giving you my opinion, is it's going to be, to try to be neutral and, and try to really point out the genuine concerns that exist. You're not going to upset anybody by doing that. Egos are fickle in Carson City, they just are.
Okay, well, it sounds like we'll go with a neutral letter stating our concerns for AB 66, so neither support or oppose.
Can we maybe put some thoughts in there as to like, due to the time of, the events of time, to try to get extension of time, to maybe put comments in there to where they maybe, like, doesn't make it mandatory for a specific time? Is it a waste of time?
I mean, we can ask for it, I, I don't suspect that will happen, but I, I don't think there's anything wrong with saying that, you know, this is the position that the county is in, that, you know, funds are tight, that we know that we're going to have a courthouse built soon, but soon, as it relates to January 2027, is also fairly soon. And so that could be part of our issue, and that, you know, if they're open to, to it again the next session, then that would be our preference, but if not, then we would understand, and that's the issue that we're in.
I would like to include some kind of wordage for time extension. The worst thing they're going to do is say no, we all have been told no, so.
The week, I mean, currently, it says it will be the 2026 election, but they could say it'll start the 2028 election.
Here, here's the question I have there, Joe. I don't think they could do it the 2028th because they can't assure money for a, a next biennium. But I wonder if they couldn't basically facilitate it in the '26 election with it to be seated in January of '28. So in other words, they're still funding within the biennium, which legally is within their constitutional authorities, but they're saying that the election could be the '26, but only seated, or have a special election in the fall of '27 to seat at '28. That I'm not sure on. I know they can't do it into the next biennium.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you have any thoughts of what Carson City was thinking? Do we know any, like, maybe they're in the same boat?
Carson City showed up in, in support on their part of the bill.
Okay.
Well, maybe by a neutrality letter, maybe they'd be like, maybe we should just let this die or hold off, who knows? Maybe we'll get lucky.
Or not, I guess we'll see. So I guess we're going to do a neutrality letter for AB 66, stating our concerns, and maybe throw out some other ideas, Joe? Matt, did you have any bills you wanted to add to Eric's list?
No, I think he covered them. Did you have any?
I had a couple that I wanted to oppose. AB 241, did you say that one, Eric?
I did not, no.
But he says it probably was, he says it was probably going to pass anyway, but we can still oppose it.
Yeah, I mean, anything to oppose it. AB 247.
I have that on my list.
AB 388.
That's on my list.
AB 462.
AB 462?
AB 479, that's the aggregate, I hate that one. AB 502. AB 547. SB 93. SB 173. SB 303. And I think you had SB 390 and SB 447 on your list, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Those are mine.
That you want to oppose?
Oppose. And then as for support, I mean, there's a couple in there, like SB 415, that's related to junk, junk titles of vehicles. I mean, to make it easier, yeah, but I don't know if we want to bother with it this year. I did like AB 363, that's the groundwater board, not that that's going to be really a problem here for us, but for other rural counties that do have groundwater issues, be nice for them to have that power and that authority. And that's all I had. Oh, and AB 211, but I think that was on your list.
Who was?
The substandard housing, yeah. That's all I had.
Did you get all those, Joe?
I think so.
Okay, with that, any other further discussion, questions, or comments? Is there any public comment? Okay, motion, please. Good luck.
I think it's, Commissioner Hyde's turn.
Do we have to list those off, or can we just say as discussed?
I prefer, just because I, I got them all.
Okay, so double checking.
Okay, go for it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve letters of, or communication of support for current AB bills, 66, 70.
Hold on, I thought, I thought 66 was going to be a neutral letter.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. AB 66 will be neutral?
Yes.
AB 70 will be support. AB 211 is support. AB 226 is support. AB 241 is oppose. AB 245 is oppose. AB 247 is oppose. AB 249 is support. AB 326, I don't, I think I might have marked that wrong.
Which one's that again?
AB 326.
That was the hospital, I didn't have that on my list personally.
So scratch AB 326. And then AB 363, support. AB 388, oppose. AB 462, oppose. AB 479, oppose. AB 502, oppose. AB 547, oppose. Senate Bill 69, support. Senate Bill 60, Senate Bill 93, oppose. Senate Bill 173, oppose. Senate Bill 303, oppose. Senate Bill 390, oppose. Senate Bill 447, oppose.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries, thank you. We are going to jump to liquor board, we are an hour behind on that, I'm sorry, Tori. With that, I need a motion to recess to move to liquor board.
Move to recess to move to liquor board?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Switch over. Aye, motion carries. Switch over. Okay, we'll go ahead and call this liquor board meeting to order. At this time, is there any public comment? Noting no public comment, can I get a verification of the posting of the agenda, please?
Pam Moore, for the record, the agenda was posted on May 15th between the hours of 8:00 and 11:00 at all of the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
Thank you, Pam. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mr. Chairman, a second to motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Review and adoption of the minutes of the April 3rd, 2025 meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted for April the 3rd, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Our first appointment, 6A, consideration of possible action, approval of an annual liquor license for Tori Sandberg, doing business as Dreville and Rome Cocktail Company LLC for a mobile bar. Who is going to take this one? Under Sheriff?
All right, there we go. For the record, Under Sheriff Lee Roscoe for Sheriff Richard Hickox, who's unable to attend today. Sheriff Hickox did do an investigation on Ms. Tori Sandberg and found out that that would preclude a liquor license being issued.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? Noting none, a motion please.
I've moved for approval of a liquor license for Tori Sandberg.
Second to motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Is there any public comment? With that, we're adjourned. Thank you, Tori, sorry. Okay, we'll resume our normally scheduled commissioners' meeting. We are on 12A, old business, consideration of possible action, improvement of an agreement for the purchase of a conservation restrictive use easement with Frey Ranch LLC on APN number 006-092-09, totaling 188.08 acres with 154.07 acres of water rights. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners, Randy Heinz, Public Works Planning and Building. So, on this parcel, there was two appraisals done, one in the as-is condition and one if there was proposed conservation easement done on it. The as-is condition came out to be $1,540,000. If it had a proposed, or if it had a conservation easement on it, it'd be $1,035,000. So, the difference of that is 505,000, and that's the appraised value of the conservation easement. The Navy would pay 75% of that, which is $378,750. The county responsibility is the remaining, which is $126,250.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? A motion please.
I move for approval of purchase of conservation easement and 248 transferable development rights from the approved sending site assessor's parcel number 006-092-09.
Mr. Chairman, a second to motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Move to 12B, consideration of possible action, approval of an agreement for purchase of a conservation slash restrictive use easement with Denver Nigra on APN 009-091-05, totaling 80 acres with 68.7 acres of water rights. Randy?
Again, thank you, Mr. Chair, Randy Heinz, for the record. Again, this one had two appraisals done it as well. The as-is condition came out as $688,000. With it, had a, if it had a conservation easement, it was, would be $436,000, that being a difference of $252,000. Again, the Navy's portion would be $189,000, and the county's portion of that would be $63,000.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? A motion please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of conservation easement and 101 transferable development rights from the approved sending site assessor's parcel number 00909105.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Randy. New Business, 13A, consideration of possible action, declaration of certain uncollected property taxes, taxes in the aggregate amount of $4,602.92 as uncollectible and striking those taxes from the tax rule. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Jeff Weed from the Church County District Attorney's Office and with me, our county assessor, Denise Monink Felton. Thank you for letting us present today. As the commission's aware, you know, all property of every kind within the state is taxable unless declared exempt or otherwise declared by statute or law. Our assessor's office works hard to ensure that the taxpayers receive an equitable assessment of their property and to ensure that taxes are collected. Despite their best efforts, at times, there are certain taxes that are not collectible. It's been presented to the board in the agenda packet and in the spreadsheet that's been provided, certain taxes that the assessor's office has done their due diligence in attempting to track down and collect, but for some reason, whether the party is out of business, there's been a revoked business license, property's been sold, or they can't be contacted. There are certain taxes that each year come before this board with a request to be declared uncollectible and to be struck from the tax rule. And so, that's why we're here today. Again, there's the spreadsheet that's been provided. The total amount, including the interest and the fees owed, is $4,602.92. If there's any specific questions, we're happy to field those, but we'd request that that motion be taken today.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions or comments for Jeff? Any public comment? A motion please.
Mr. Chair, I move to strike the uncollected taxes from the tax rules as set forth by the 2025 uncollectible delinquent amounts spreadsheet in the aggregate amount of $4,602.92.
Mr. Chairman, a second to motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Move to 13B, consideration of possible action. Thank you, guys. Consideration of possible action, approval of writing off uncollectible water and sewer customer accounts in the amount of $4,332.36. Sherry?
Thank you. As you know, we have outsourced our billings to SPB, and they do a great job of collecting fees. And we have three accounts that have been sitting on the books that are actual, not property owners, but tenants that were renting the properties. And it's been deemed that these are uncollectible. You do have the option of assessing these to the parcel and putting them on a lien, if you prefer. But one of the, the total fees that we would be writing off are $196.84, and there was interest that was accruing on one of these tenants, which is $4,135.52, because it's been sitting there since 2012. So, rather than assessing the owners of the properties, I'm requesting that we just write this off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sherry. Any questions or comments from border staff?
Have we done this in the past?
Yes, it's rare, though. We haven't done it in a really long time. That's why that one from 2012 is still sitting there.
And is it uncommon to not hold the property owner accountable for the use of the utilities on his property, or?
We have never assessed them since it started in '07.
Do we have any language in our utility agreements with the services to each property that addresses this issue, to where in the future, we can hold the property?
Yeah, the ordinance does say that we can assess them if we want. So, we could assess them, but due to the small dollar value, since the late fees were just because it's been sitting there, it's just been compounding for 10 years.
So, the one that's $4,000 was originally?
Was originally $133.88.
Okay.
So, rather than, just as a goodwill to the property owners, I mean, they are amazing because they collect and they go after these people, and this is very rare.
I'm just thinking, if we don't have any language?
No, it's there. We can.
Okay, so maybe we get a clean slate today and maybe?
Well, I'm assuming this is a different property owner at this point in time, given how long ago it was, but could be wrong.
I know that that was, what I got from SPB was it was a difficult tenant, and there was a lot of legal stuff involved.
Yeah, so you're punishing, you're punishing the property owner and not the actual tenant. So, I think we, yeah, let it go this one time, and then if there's a further problem.
Joe, is there a statutory timeline?
There likely is for this, I think six years for back tax-related stuff. So, I mean, there's still a lot there, but yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments from border staff?
I just think maybe in the future, we just get it taken care of when it happens.
Mm-hmm, agreed.
Maybe note that down or something. Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Okay, a motion please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the write-off of uncollectible wastewater and waste customer accounts from prior fiscal years in the amount of $4,332.36.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. 13C, consideration of possible action, approval of revised interlocal agreement contract between Nevada Division of Agriculture and Churchill County to collect, test, and submit reports on groundwater samples in Churchill County, not to exceed $25,000 from date of board approval through May 31st, 2029. Jim?
Mr. Chairman, Jim Barbie, for the record. So, you've previously approved this, I believe it was for a two-year. Department of Ag wanted to do a three-year for how the fees and everything work out over that time and their commitment to the project. And so, they came back, which we thought was settled, and requested these changes to the contract. So, it's the same, same amount of money per year, same number of testing, just different dates.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Any questions or comments from border staff?
I want to clarify, did you say three years or the contracts were five years? I thought the original contract was five years.
I'm trying to remember what the original was. I thought it was two years, and then this one takes it to, I guess that's four years.
And I guess the contract would supersede any recording, so?
Well, but the other one wasn't recorded because they didn't sign it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, there's not another one sitting out there. This would just be the updated version based on what you approved, we signed, sent to Department of Ag, and they said, no, we want to do this, which, for whatever reason.
Any other questions or comments? Any public comment? Okay, a motion please.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve a revised interlocal contract between the Nevada Division of Agriculture and Churchill County to collect, test, and submit reports on groundwater samples in Churchill County, not to exceed $25,000 from date of board approval through May 31st, 2029.
Mr. Chairman, a second to motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. 13D, consideration of possible action, approval of a class specification, job description for an administrative assistant, grants position at a pay grade 47. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Chris Bros, for the record. So, Churchill County Social Services has been awarded a $42,000 grant from the State of Nevada Health and Human Services, Aging and Disability Services for personnel costs. These funds were allocated to assist Churchill County in developing a transition plan and implementation of the Churchill, Churchill Area Regional Transport Program from the nonprofit to Churchill County. The grant is made up of $39,000 and change from the Administration for Community Living and a $2,300 and change match from the State of Nevada. This grant does require a 15% match, so the county would be on the hook for $6,300 of that position. We have several administrative assistant positions. However, we didn't want to convolute the current job description by adding these tasks, so we could keep those separate, not obligated, obligate all other administrative assistants for these tasks. Furthermore, as part of the SNPLMA project submission that Churchill County put in, we had, we included several positions for the administration of those projects, and one of those was a grants person. And they're there to manage the administrative paperwork associated with the grant funding. The $42,000 grant that we're talking about expires October 1st. We are uncertain whether or not our SNPLMA reimbursement will be available at that time. So, what we will do, like we do with all grant-funded positions in the job description, the job recruitment posting, and the job offer letters, will be clear that this position is based on having sufficient grant funds. And should those grant funds not be available, then the position could be eliminated. We are working diligently to try to get the SNPLMA projects underway and get our notice of award. But as you can imagine, through other matters that this board takes action on, working right now with the BLM is not expedient. Ms. Ernst, the Director of Social Services, is also going to see if she can extend that grant, because that $42,000 will not be expended by October 1st. So, if she can extend that grant to get the full 42, whether that's the end of October or the end of November, that would help us gauge a little more time to potentially get the SNPLMA stop wrapped up. So, at this point in time, I'm asking for the approval of the job description and to allow HR to commence with the recruiting of this position upon approval. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or Ms. Ernst is here as well, if you have any questions regarding the grant itself.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments from border staff?
I just have one comment for clarity. This position will handle all the SNPLMA money as it starts coming in and make the bookkeeping of it and stuff like that, correct?
That's correct. We have that grants position that does the administration. It's going to make sure that we stay in compliance with all the regulatory requirements that we have as part of SNPLMA and things like that. So, when that shifts over, that's going to be that person's responsibility.
And then she can handle, still handle what Ms. Ernst's needs are?
Ms. Ernst's needs are short-term. It's really just for the, for the development of the transition plan and then the implementation. So, that will stop at some point in time. And that's why we're saying, hopefully, when that ends, we will have the SNPLMA funds and this position can roll right into that. If not, we're going to have a break, and we're going to have to handle that with either a layoff or something like that. Or if other grant funds are found at that time for that kind of work.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's all the questions I have.
Any other questions from border staff? Is there any public comment? Okay, a motion please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the class specification for the administrative assistant grants and to authorize human resources to begin the recruitment process to fill the position.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. 12B, consideration of possible action, adoption of resolution 6-2025, a resolution dissolving the petty cash fund for the county manager's office. Jim?
Mr. Chairman, Jim Barbie, for the record, this does just what you stated. We no longer use the petty cash and need to eliminate it.
Any questions or comments from border staff?
No.
Is there any public comment? Noting none, a motion please.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt resolution 6-2025, a resolution dissolving the petty cash fund for the county manager's office.
Second motion?
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. 12F, consideration of possible action, update regarding the selection process for a new county manager and input from the board on the interview process. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joe, do you want to lead off and then I back clean up, or how do you want to do this?
Sure, I'll go ahead and get us started. Again, Joe Sanford, for the record, the job posting for the county manager position closed on May 1st. There were 31 applicants. According to the process before, they were screened for people that were qualified. Approximately 13 were minimally qualified for the position. They were invited to a review panel. The review panel is recommending three names to the board with three alternates in the event that any of the people scheduled for an interview decides they want to withdraw. The purpose of today's, I think, discussion is largely to get input from the board as to what your preferences are in regards to the interview process, specifically related to amount of duration of the hearings or the interviews, any topics that you want to have on the, during the interview. So, just general recommendations based off of discussions with HR has been that we'd expect to have an hour and a half-long interviews, approximately 15. that we'd expect to have an hour and a half long interviews, approximately fifteen questions, uh, would give us five minutes to answer each question for seventy-five minutes, five minutes for introductions, and ten minutes for any questions the candidates may have. The interviews are currently planned for immediately following our next regularly scheduled county commission meeting, so that would be eight fifteen to, would be the initial time. Uh, it's been recommended that that be left as a light agenda so that interviews could start at nine thirty. And that would give sort of a timeframe of nine thirty to eleven for the first interview, uh, eleven to twelve thirty for the second, and twelve thirty to two for the last. Uh, at that time, the board could take a, uh, recess, think about it, um, and then start deliberations upon reconvening. The, uh, current process is sort of, uh, I guess discussed in a couple of different ways. The, uh, current intention is to have three, since we'd have three candidates, have three things for them to do. While, while the first person's interviewing, uh, the other, another candidate would be performing a kind of written assessment, plan of, uh, a couple of simple fact patterns related to Churchill County and Churchill County's needs that they can write a response to. Uh, that's something you would have the opportunity to read during your break. Uh, and then the third candidate would have an opportunity to go on a tour with, I think the thought was the county manager, so that he wouldn't be involved in, in this process and could kind of give an idea for candidates of what the general nature of the county was like. And then they would rotate as the interview process went forward. So current topics that are, uh, included in our job posting are financial and budget management, uh, water resources and federal land use, growth of the county, economic development, and state and federal policymaking. Um, if you have additional topics that you want to have considered, um, or have questions directed towards, I'd ask that you email those to Kim, preferably this week sometime, so that we can have, uh, time to generate good questions for that interview. And I think that's all I really have. If you have any questions, happy to hear it. Obviously, you're, you guys are running the show, so you're welcome to tell us if you want to do something different.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments from board or staff?
I would just add in as the last part of that, so what we're looking for is for you to give us guidance on, um, the length of the, the interview, the day start time of the interview, um, and then if you're good with what Joe kind of laid out in terms of generally a, a structuring of how we would do that during the day to keep each of the three, um, uh, busy and, and occupied while the other is, is being interviewed. So if you could, or, you know, you want to go totally a different direction, uh, then line that out as well. Those are basically our asks.
I, I would just say that we do have CC Communications that day and Highway Commission, so that may add a little bit of time.
Do we need to, do we need to break the interviews and do those meetings? Or can we post those meetings for a later time that day? Before the deadline hits and then we don't have to break away?
That's, I think we could post them at whenever we want. I mean, again, both of those are under our direction, so I think you could push them to whenever you, whenever we want. Correct, Joe?
Those do not have a statutory date and time, so you can set them to be a different time that's convenient to you. As long as, I mean, the road department one just has to be at the beginning of the month, near the beginning of the month. So if you want to choose a different day, if you want to do it, uh, during your break period, whichever, whatever your preference is.
And depending on the agenda of the county meeting, we may be able to do one of them right after the county meeting, early that morning. But we wouldn't know that until you built the agenda, I guess.
I mean, generally speaking, Highway Commission's a pretty light agenda. Um, every once in a while, we have the agenda item for road and bridge projects and stuff like that, but most of the time, those are all less than ten minutes. I think that's pretty custom. So I think, just like you said, Eric, I think it's best to do our, pack that meeting light anyway, the actual commissioners meeting light, schedule Highway Commission directly after that for ten minutes, and then, then start. And CC Communications, I guess we'll have to get ahold of Mark and see what that looks like, but if he has a light agenda or can make it a light agenda, we can either do it or just cancel CC Communications.
We, we could maybe do all three meetings and then start the interviews at ten o'clock.
Additionally, in looking at what was suggested, we're suggesting ninety-minute interview lengths. Maybe you'd want those at an hour or something. Just, that's another option for you to look at.
Having, having done this before, um, we actually gave a time limit and we told the people being interviewed, you have this amount of time and there's this many questions. So use your time wisely, so you don't run out of time. It really kind of keeps people direct, and so they don't go down rabbit holes. Um, that's something we can think about. Um, actually had a candidate not get to all the questions, so.
I'm, I'm personally fine with an hour, and again, just like you said, that's going to keep them direct, on point. You got to be quick on your feet, ready to go, get through as many questions as you can.
The only concern I have there is if, if we have rebuttal questions, and now we're trying to squeeze all this in an hour, are we really giving the, the gentleman or the lady, or I'm sorry, the applicant a fair shake at an interview if we're going to restrict them to an hour? I mean, I like an hour and a half pretty good, because even if they do get done early, then that gives us a little extra time to put our thoughts together immediately. That's one way to look at that. Another way is, is everything's just not pushed through and rushed through. So in order to give someone a fair shake, I mean, I think, I, I'd really like an hour and a half.
You also have to be really con- conscious of rebuttal questions. You can ask clarifying questions, but you really, otherwise, I'm sure Joe could speak to.
Yeah, so we will have prepared questions that will have run through legal and HR to ensure that we don't have anything that could potentially be problematic. And we generally ask the same questions to ensure that every applicant is treated equally across all of them. And so if an applicant has, you know, answers a question and you have a small, you know, question related to their response, you know, that can be okay. But I'm going to encourage us to limit ourselves preferably towards the, the questions that have already been vetted, so. Yeah, I, I mean, we'll talk more about that in, in our discussions, but, uh, as long as we don't leave what was originally planned, it's okay. We try not to, to generate too many independent questions.
I understand. I mean, I understand that totally. It's just, if we're going to have fifteen questions and try to get them all answered in an hour and then allow us to comment back, that's going to press the time limit pretty good, and then I'm, I can only assume if we only ask the first candidate eight questions, then we can only ask the next candidates those same eight questions. We can't pick through the questions, correct?
Well, no, but if you pre-warn the candidate and you tell them you have X amount of time, just like Matt said, you have X amount of time and there's this many questions, it, that's, if they only get to question eight, that's on them for only getting to question eight. You should have clarified your thoughts more. I don't, that sounds rude, I guess, but you should have used your time more wisely.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, clarification, Joe, because I'm just not sure. When we hand the questions out to the commissioners, then those become public and we have to give a copy to the public. So those set questions become public at the beginning of that first interview. So if you have ten questions, and I, I mean, the number of questions will be reflective of the, the number or the time that you guys decide, whether it's an hour or an hour and a half. So if it's an hour and a half, you're probably not going to do, um, fifteen, I mean, I'm just wagging, we had done the math, but you'd probably do ten or something like that.
My only concern is, is this a very important position, and I don't want to rush the, the interviews, and I don't want to rush the process. And that's, that's how I feel, and I feel strong about that. And if we're trying to save a couple hours in one day, I've, I've worked many a days all day long, so, um, that's how I feel about that, and then, and since I got the floor, you know, I would like to see if there's any discussable appetite to, to move the interviews to five people instead of three. Because we did have thirteen qualified candidates, and five is, uh, is a good number. I mean, it's probably like thirty percent of the qualified candidates. Like I said, this is a long-term position, and, uh, we need to take this very seriously. So we need to make sure we're interviewing the right amount of people and providing enough time for an interview to be done properly. And I do understand the concerns of long-winded answers, being direct, but sometimes people can't give a direct answer. They need like two more sentences to, to give the good answer that we want to have.
So are you good with ninety minutes?
Ninety minutes? Is that what you're saying? An hour and a half? I think an hour and a half is, is a, is a good time for an interview and have fifteen questions. I do agree with that. I think one hour is, is cutting it pretty tight. But I would like to, I would like to see us interview five people, and since they've already determined six possible candidates, then it wouldn't be that hard, I don't think, for them to, uh, get to five to interview and two alternates.
Well, then if we're going to do five, five at ninety minutes, I would recommend we don't do it on the same day we have a commission meeting.
We're going to have to split it, yeah.
We're going to have to split it.
Well, and, and on top of that, we're going to have to reconvene the, the committee. We can't give you, we didn't, what the committee brought forward was a recommendation for three and three additional. So you could do five and one, but you, you, we would have to reconvene the recommendation committee to get to.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misspoke. I misspoke. Five and one with one alternate. I, I wrote down the wrong number, sorry.
But now that puts, so now that poses the question, if you want to do five and then the one alternate, if you want to do five, that's going to be, hypothetically speaking, if we start this at ten o'clock, you go through all that, I mean, six o'clock, seven o'clock at night, now is there an unfair advantage for the last candidate? Because?
I do agree with Commissioner Hyde that if we do, uh, entertain five applicants, that we make it its own day.
And, and, and Miles is a hundred percent right. This is going to be a public meeting, and the fifth person will absolutely have the advantage.
And that's my other concern that I was just thinking about.
Because the fifth person will absolutely, probably the third, fourth, it just gets a stronger advantage.
Keep them all busy, like, five different activities.
And, and even so, this process is terrible. Uh, you know, I want this to go through legislation to change this process because it's an absolute unfair advantage for the last person going, because somebody will text them the answers or the questions.
Is it possible to isolate these candidates? Is that even in this realm? Or whoever?
For eight hours?
Isolate them for a whole entire workday?
Well, they're trying to get a job.
Uh, you're right, I guess, yeah, that's true.
Yes, that depends on what you mean by isolate. I mean, I think the discussion was had about, you know, doing a, a writing sample, you know, they would have a, a computer with, you know, that they'd be able to write on for us, but that was a relatively short period of time. I don't know that we would have a, an ability. It's not like we can actually check their phones or say, turn these in or any, I mean, I guess we could ask, but.
But, but that's the point, right? I think we could ask all these things, but we can't mandate these things because it's a public meeting and they are public.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just asking. They have a right to be here today also, and they're, you know, they could be watching today also.
They might be watching.
Whoever they are. So I'm, I'm not too concerned about the fifth or the fourth applicant or the third applicant knowing what's going on. I think, uh, we're capable to interview them correctly and, and decide who the best candidate would be to begin with. So I don't, I have, I have a little concern of, uh, of that matter.
Are we going to have these candidates draw numbers to see when they interview? I mean, that's what we've done in the past. Are we going to have these candidates draw numbers to see where they're at in the interview line?
Well, without revealing, um, who the candidates are, because I'm not sure they've even been notified, uh, the three scenario, we came up with, uh, one of them, um, is a, um, employee of the county, and so we figured then they didn't necessarily need a tour, and so it makes sense that they would be the first interview, and then the tour and the testing could happen for the other two at the same time, so it kind of worked out, uh, from that direction. If, uh, you go to five, you're probably going to want to do some kind of, um, draw. We figured we'd draw for the second and the third, uh, hole under that scenario. Like I say, we tried to put together what we thought was going to make the most sense based on the recommendation for the, from the, um, review committee.
I would, can, can HR assign a number to each candidate and then, um, HR or someone assigned and will pull the numbers out of the hat and that's how the interview process happens?
Sure, that's what you do.
You know?
Can we? Okay, I'm fine with five in, in ninety minutes. Uh, can we do it on Wednesday, the day before our commission meeting?
I'm, I, I can do that.
What time are you thinking?
Eight thirty?
We have mayor that morning.
Yeah, we'd cancel.
Cancel it, okay. That's fine with me then.
So eight or eight thirty?
Eight.
Eight AM?
Yep.
June the fourth?
Yep.
Five candidates, ninety minutes.
Five candidates, ninety minutes. Now we've got to come up with, well, what we're going to do with the candidates, because we have no choice.
One, one clarifying, if you go that direction, um, and we have six that have been selected, if we have people fall out, that six would be our, um, max. So let's say that only four of them agreed to interview, then you would interview four, correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, just making sure we're all on the same page. Thank you.
And what do we want to do? I guess the only option really is politely ask that they not watch, but we can't.
I think we just let it be.
Okay.
Let it be and let it work itself out and.
That's, so what we did, we asked them just to not whether they do or not.
Yeah.
But you asked, and that was, that's what it was.
Okay.
And that's the plan for that, so we have.
Kind of a gentleman's agreement.
And I guess, yeah, and I just want to clarify, like, we have the six candidates that you've brought forward, and that's, uh, that's it. Like, like Mr. Barbie said, if three of them drop out, we're only going to interview three, and we're not going to go back to the other qualified applicants, correct? That's how I understand that.
That, yes, that is how it's, would unfold now. I guess if we wanted to change that, we could change that, but that's, again, having that interview committee, committee reconvene and go again and.
And, yeah, and you guys are total control, right? So I mean, if you only interviewed three, let's say three dropped out, you interviewed three, and you weren't satisfied with those candidates, then you have the ability to go back out and open it up or see the remainder of those that were qualified or, you know, do any number of those things.
Yeah. And I think that's fine. I mean, I think that's where we should go. I mean, they applied for the job, so surely they'll want to interview.
Okay.
At what point are those questions going to come out? I mean, maybe to make it fair, they just know what the fifteen questions are and can be well-prepared.
So the questions will be available to the public as soon as they're available to you. So generally, we would give you the questions at the time the meeting starts, and then copies will exist in the back in case members of the public want to follow along. Again, it's up to, up to you on whether you want to make them public beforehand or not. We could include them in the packet and make it sort of a, a preparatory thing as well, but typically, we have not done that.
Yeah, I would rather not do that. I'd rather have to think on their feet.
And especially if we're doing ninety minutes now, then that allows the time to, for them to articulate their thoughts. So we have the duration, how many applicants? So duration of ninety minutes, five applicants, uh, June 4th, start time of eight AM, and then.
Do we want to discuss a lunch break in there?
Yeah, that'll probably just work itself out, whatever ends up closest between eleven thirty and twelve thirty or somewhere right around there, so probably.
Some of these candidates, it may not take ninety minutes.
Yeah, that's true, too.
You never know. You never know. But we can't start the next one until there's allotted time, correct?
That's correct.
And Joe, are you gonna have your usual instruction period at the very beginning? So you don't wanna start the first interview at eight, right? You wanna give them instructions.
I assume the actual interview will start at eight fifteen, so we can do public comment and.
So each interview.
So if each one of them has ninety minutes and you do interview five, then you're talking seven and a half hours of, uh, just interview time period. So, and we've done this like with budget and that kinda stuff where basically we have, uh, food, snacks and stuff like that that we can bring into the room. And, and, cause I mean, that doesn't even count deliberation at the end. So you're talking, you know, you may be in here nine hours or so. And, and so I'm saying we're, as staff, we're more than happy to facilitate, uh, snacks, drinks, all that kinda good stuff.
Does that work for both of you guys?
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay. So then that's taken care of. Is there any, any other guidance you guys need on anything?
Anything missing, Joe? The topics work out for you? Finance, water, natural resources, economic development, growth and state and federal policy?
I liked all those topics, yes.
But we're probably not supposed to talk about our topics today. We just need to email them, like additional one, if we have additional ones.
Email them to Kim, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion, please. Public comment, is that you? Oh, there we go, public comment.
My name's Bob Ghetto for the record. And as I was listening to this, I have a specific, uh, question from Commissioner Hyde. When you brought up the fact just a few minutes ago, maybe there is a benefit to letting them know all the questions ahead of time. And then you said maybe not let them, or someone said think on their feet. I'm interested in that thought process. Is there a benefit to letting, let the five or six candidates know the, the questions ahead of time? I was interested by that and I, I see potential in that. So you have a comment?
Guess I really.
You can if you want to.
I, I see benefit and I see, thinking on your feet is good. I, I wouldn't be opposed to having a certain number of questions out there. Prior, I see a good mix of being prepared with some questions and thinking on your feet. So some questions, they could have, certain amount they can't.
I support that. I mean, this is a super important process that three of you guys are gonna do. And I just think, I was interested in that. I just think if you can expand on that and if you do guys decide to do that, I think it's good.
I think it, it, to have some questions beforehand, it gives you a chance to see how much they researched those topics and those, to come up with their answers. That's the benefit I see. So if you wanna entertain that, if that's a possibility where we can give them a certain number of questions prior.
I'm open to that. I, I, what I would mention is that we, we sort of covered something similar to that by having a writing portion. You know, which is while, which was part, part of the, the plan here while people were cycling around was that they would have a written portion where they would have thirty, forty-five minutes for each question to say, hey, you know, we wanna have an in-depth analysis on a particular issue. Write it down and then the board will have a chance to review that at your deliberation stage to say, you know, does that make sense to you? But, uh, obviously that doesn't give as much time for research because, you know, you're gonna be here.
And the thing is, yeah. The thing about it is, is we don't get to see those as commissioners till the public sees them. So that's the other benefit of having those questions out. We get to see them as well.
True.
So we get to formulate some thoughts. Just.
And then I would just also remind you that you're identifying specifically the areas of the question, like right now. That's public.
Any other questions, comments, additions?
I just wanna clarify one more thing. DA Sanford said that we could submit topics. I guess, assume we can also submit additional questions to make sure that if they've not been covered, that they could be thrown in there.
Right. You can submit topics and questions. Obviously, your question's not necessarily included. We'll look at it and compare it with the questions that are already written and say, okay, is this something that we are, is already covered? Or does it have an element that's not covered and we wanna include in a new, new question?
And she's in the HR department. Are you included in the setup of all that or just her only or?
I mean, I'm included. That would just make sure that the questions are legally sound.
Okay. So you do review all that?
District attorney, the HR and the county manager have all been involved in all of these.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Comments, concerns? If not, a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the process to, for the interviews, the interview process for county manager. We have established that the interviews will take forth on June the fourth of twenty twenty-five at eight AM in this chambers. We will be interviewing five candidates and each interview will be ninety minutes in length. And I think that's it.
And one further, I'm sorry. And just, we, we're operating under an assumption, but I assume it's, it's all good. We, you know, those that are out of the area, we will basically pay their travel to have them here.
And then any candidate that's out of the area, Churchill County will cover their travel. And the interview times will be predetermined. And each candidate will know the time of their interview and they know that it will not start prior to that time.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Move on to the consent items. Is there anything anyone wants to pull from the consent? If not, a motion to approve that, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent, uh, items as presented.
It's been moved. Is there a second on that?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded now. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Does anyone have anything they wanna consider for a future agenda item?
Not at this time.
If not, we'll move to Commissioner and Management Staff Report.
Mr. Mr. Chair, if I could have a moment, while you were discussing AB sixty-six and you had a lot of questions about what it was gonna look like with the judge and all those things. I reached out to Judge Stockard hoping he might be able to just pop down. And of course, he was on the bench and so he wasn't able to just pop down. Uh, but he said he was available now and I thought, well, if you guys have any questions specifically for him about how the judge thing was gonna run uh, or what his feel was on how the sponsor would take your recommendations, I figured we might wanna hear from him now.
We'd love to have your feelings on AB sixty-six, Judge Stockard.
Technology. Tom Stockard, District Court Judge, for the record. I'm not exactly sure where we're at, but maybe I'll update you on what, uh, what has been happening, uh, uh, in the legislature and, and, and behind the scenes. Just today over the lunch hour, uh, there was a fiscal note from parole and probation. They had some concerns about, uh, the impact, uh, that it would have on them and whether they would need an extra employee, particularly in Carson City. And, 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 and here in Fallon, if, uh, a judge was added. AB sixty-six was originally a bill that, uh, would add over twenty judges, uh, throughout the state. I think it was eighteen in, uh, Clark County. Five or six in Washoe County, one in the eleventh, which is, uh, Mineral, Pershing and, uh, Lander County. And then one in the sixth, which is Humboldt County. Uh, and then one in, uh, the tenth, which is Churchill and one in, uh, the first, which is Carson City. And, uh, it was amended and it was whittled down to just Churchill and Carson City. It's based a lot on, on the workload here in, uh, Churchill County. I handle seventeen hundred cases a year. That's, uh, uh, that's by myself essentially. In, uh, Clark County, they have a workload that's essentially that. They also have maybe ten or fifteen masters, a discovery master, uh, uh, and, and so, so, so that it's, it's spread out. Carson City is unique because they have to handle all these constitutional questions, all the, uh, things. And, and their caseload is, is fairly large. We met with parole and probation today, uh, Chief Jackson, who used to be a Fallon Police Department Officer. And, uh, we committed, uh, our plan all along here, it doesn't add criminal cases. We were going to, uh, continue to just have our law and motion one day a week so it wouldn't increase their workload. And, and Carson agreed to continue with just their two days a week of their criminal, uh, law and motion. What we really need is the other ninety percent of the caseload, which is family law, uh, juvenile law, probate law. We need to free up time so we can continue to do those. They're withdrawing their fiscal concerns. And so that was really, uh, the last hurdle. I don't know exactly what questions you have. It's my understanding that, uh, if, I, I'm reading while I'm on the bench and I never do that. But, uh, this was important, this, that, that you're maybe considering sending a neutral request and you had some questions about.
So the way the motion was made is gonna be neutral with kind of Churchill County's concerns and comments? There was discussion of support as well as opposition for the bill. Go ahead, Matt.
The, I, I feel like the main concern is, is being ready to house another judge and our facilities and not having a new courthouse in time for this to take place.
And that, and I think that's a fair concern. I, I see him as, I, I've come to grips, I've thought a lot about this. And, and we've come up with a plan and I met with, uh, Jim originally. And it's a, it's, would be to add two employees. One is a law clerk and one would be a, a court, uh, a judicial assistant that the two judges would share. We probably, we don't probably, I'm the only judge in the state that doesn't have a judicial assistant. Now my court administrator does that. We can accommodate it in our existing courthouse. I mean, it's, it'll be cozy. But, uh, it, uh, we had three judges in, in, in the existing courthouse before that we split. Now they were driving to Car, uh, to Lyon. We also have that courtroom downstairs in the justice court that, uh, when there was the, uh, fire and the, uh, things downstairs, we, we functioned in that existing court. And so a lot of our hearings don't require big courtrooms, family law cases. I mean, we can make do. And, uh, and, but this is a decision that obviously it's yours. They don't come around, uh, and there's five other counties that are not going to, uh, get the judges that they think they need. I think if you're neutral, it's likely that our portion of the bill dies. And that's okay. I mean, it's, I'm busy. Some of the challenges, we have what I call the grain of our senior judges. Uh, if I'm, uh, have, have, have a conflict or if I'm sick. I, I'm healthy, but if there was something that came up, um, the senior judges I'm relying now, relying on now are in their upper seventies. And, uh, the legislature meets only every two years. I don't think we go back to the front of the line if we pass now. Um, and that's just something to think about. The judge is funded, uh, and, and, and all of those is funded by the state. There is some cost to the county. But, uh, I appreciate the worry about whether we can accommodate it. I think it's a lot easier to have the judge and find where we're gonna have our hearings than to have more space than I need, but not enough judicial resources to hear the cases. And, uh, I'll support whatever you decide to do and we'll make do. But, uh, if we, uh, if we pass now, I, I, I think it'll, it's likely because judges are only elected every six years. It's at least twenty thirty-two before they, uh, consider it again. We'll probably have the facilities, but, uh, there, there's a lot of process that, uh, due process that, you know, it's just, it gets hard. And that's just, that's the only thing that, um, I know you have weighty decisions and my problems are not your only problems. And, uh, but, uh, that's my thoughts.
And that was another fear that, you know, was our fear is, will this ever happen again? You know, when will this come up again where there's this legislation where we can get another judge? Maybe we're not in a financial position or politically in the same spot we are now.
I think, right now, we're at the front. I, I, I think if they had to drop a judge right now, as it stands, they would drop Carson over us. Our caseload is, uh, quite a bit higher on a per judge basis. Uh, but I think you don't always return to the front of the line, even if you deserve it, if you decide you don't wanna do it. And so that, that's a decision for you to make. Uh, it might go through if you're neutral. Uh, but I candidly, in this legislative session where they're going to spend very, very limited resources. And, and Carson's support for their judge is full-throated. They, uh, uh, and, and so I, I think if they had to choose, if, if, if there was a, a letter of neutrality or a letter of opposition and concerns, I think it, we probably are the first to drop, even though we are first in line right now. Um, and that's, that, that, those are just, that's, I think, the reality of the, this legislative session where they're working with less resources than they thought they were originally gonna have. And so my hope would be that you might reconsider that and, um, I mean, you don't have to do anything. And I think right now, uh, it would sail through. I think if you send something, I would, if, if you want it to go through, I think you really need to just send a letter of support. If you don't want it to go through, oppose it. If you, I think, but I think if you're neutral, I'm not sure what, how they're gonna receive that.
Definitely I open. I'm glad you showed up. That answered a lot of my questions, a lot of my concerns.
The neutrality letter was gonna have concerns that we have, you know, that is holding us back from supporting it fully. And we, we have to be mindful of, uh, the money.
Yeah.
And, um, I mean, it is great that you brought to light that if you had to function, you could function. Uh, we, I think as the commission, we have heavy concerns of two judges trying to operate on the top floor of that one bill or the courthouse. But if you had one judge that only had five people in their courtroom all the time, then do you just switch up the cases to where one day you would work down in the justice court and the other guy would work upstairs to where we don't have this bunch of people in one area or something?
Yeah. Not, not knowing exactly who we're gonna be working with and it's going to be an equal, I mean, I, I, I don't, I, I, but I think we would work that out. So the vast majority of our cases are, are smaller number of involved litigants. I'm, I'm doing a termination of parental rights case right now. And it's the two parties and their counsel. And they could easily go over to the justice court downstairs, um, and, and meet. And, and in particular, I think that would be necessary when there was a jury trial going on. It's, the facility really is not meant to handle one jury trial. You know, we, right now, we put the jury in the second courtroom. Cause the jury room, uh, is just, it doesn't, you can't even fit twelve people around the table. And, and so I, I'm not saying, I, I think whether we have one judge or two judges, ultimately we'll need a new courthouse. That's not, but I'm, but whether, but if we get the second judge, I think we, we would be, and I, I think of the people who, in order to be qualified to be a judge, you have to be a lawyer for over ten years. I can look around and identify who those people are in the community. And I think I can work with any of them. And I think we would all work cooperatively in that way. But if, uh, if our location constraints are, are the biggest concern, uh, I think if we share that with the legislature, they may just look for the easy, low-hanging fruit and push the eject. They're definitely not gonna send us any money to help build a courthouse. You know, and they, they may just look for, I, cause right now, I think they're behind it. just look for, because right now I think they're behind it. I there's no guarantees in this last week, but like the last hurdle that I think the AOC saw was this P and P. And they just didn't understand how both Carson and Churchill were going to approach it. Because we're going to we do the same number of criminal cases. It's just it frees up other judicial time to do some of the things that have really grown in the number of cases that we handle.
I think all of my concerns have been put to rest.
Yeah.
So I think that I have to reconsider and support this without any neutrality.
Can well, prior to that, just.
Go ahead.
Does the County Manager, Barbara, do you have any thoughts to the facilities? That you have anything that's popping out of you that of great concern that it wouldn't work?
No, I mean, I think Judge Stockard, I'll always lean to him. My quoting our meeting was inaccurate. I said three and and you had said two. And so I apologize about that.
I'll take three.
If the if Judge Stockard is is good and recognizes that there there may be some hurdles. Because I did convey to them that, you know, we're continuing to move with the courthouse and probably if there was any lag or drag, it was basically watching interest rates and trying to get a little bit cheaper money on that federal side. But we've been I told him I was tasked with moving this forward in my very first meeting in May twentieth of nineteen eighteen. So yeah, I mean, he's good. I think we're good. It just would that be a motion to reconsider that item, Joe?
Yeah, you, Mr. Chair, if you just wanted to reopen the legislative item and then make a new motion related to AB sixty-six.
We can.
You just amend the motion to include.
We'll go ahead and reopen ten A, consideration of possible action, update on the status of all bills in the twenty twenty-five Nevada Legislature and support or opposition to any bill that has an impact on county government and or the citizens of Churchill County. We'll reopen that to amend the motion. Eric Blakely, I think you made that motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to acknowledge the that we've had new evidence been presented by the the judge himself. And the concerns that we had have been addressed. And what was holding us back from approving it has been addressed adequately. And we've conferred with the staff also. So I'd like to amend the motion to include a support letter to AB sixty-six.
I will second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize, I'm just going to duck out.
No problem.
All right.
Okay, we will jump back to sixteen, Commissioner and Management Staff Reports. We'll start with you, Commissioner Blakely.
I was busy this time. I attended the college school where they dedicated the plaque and all the works. I'd like to say thank you to the previous commission for getting that all done. And thank you to the staff for making that happen. It's definitely valuable to our community. I was the speaker at the Fallon Day of Prayer and I attended the Nevada Interfaith Breakfast in Reno, representing or just there as a person. Attended a Fire Board meeting with General Business, the CETA meeting. We're finalizing the revolving loan program that's going to be offered to local businesses to help them get over a hurdle or get started. I attended the Fire Department Street Dance. A lot of people there. We gave out five hundred and something tri-tip and seven hundred and something hot dogs. So that's a lot. And museum, general meeting, or General Business. And I'd like to say thank you to the Comptroller's Office and staff and the County Manager's Office and staff for all their hard work and dedication on getting the budget ready to go and getting it sent out. That's all I have.
Commissioner Hyde?
The cottage schools repurposing. I love repurposing of especially since I went to the furthest east school, Mrs. Barazzo. I think I don't think I know anybody that forgot what's which cottage school they went to. So it was awesome to go in and see how much that was left, like remembering the little tiny toilets still there. It's awesome to see. I love to see repurposing stuff, not tearing it down and starting over. It adds a lot of character to this community. And that's all.
Okay, I had the I attended the street dance as well. And I also had a La Hawn Conservation District meeting. And on another note, on behalf of Churchill County as well as this board up here, I'd like to send our condolences to Tristan Redmond's family. He was a sheriff deputy at the sheriff's office and unfortunately passed away in an accident. So our condolences to his family. And that's all I had. Sherry?
If I'd like to head to that.
Go ahead.
Funeral is tomorrow at one PM, two PM at the North Taylor LDS Church, correct?
Okay, Sherry?
We're just going into budget augmentations.
Joe?
Two more weeks of legislature, so we're all very happy about that. That's enough to celebrate for me.
Jim?
Also convey condolences to the family and the Sheriff's Department. Tragic loss. The cottage school was a great event and that, you know, I've had the great honor of being engaged in several cool projects while I've been here in Churchill County. But that's my favorite. It honestly is. It's just nothing cooler. And then lastly, we've been engaged in a tremendous amount of communication with Congressman Amade's office as they've been building, what is it, the big beautiful budget or whatever, the or big beautiful bill, I guess it is. We've been working on the big beautiful budget. They've been working on the big beautiful bill. The amendment that Mark had submitted or Congressman Amade had submitted, we're very appreciative for, we're very appreciative to the congressman for what he's done for Churchill County with the lands bill that we received. And, you know, we wish and and hope that the the wants and aspirations of other counties are also acknowledged. We have voiced to them our our concerns around the sniplama component of that and that we want to see the sniplama fund continue to grow. We want to provide clarity on that, that the existing fund, even through this bill and crash, after this bill continues on, as it were, that it's not in jeopardy. And there's still twenty-seven thousand acres of land that was originally identified in the legislation in nineteen ninety-eight that will continue to fund the sniplama fund itself. But we are hopeful that as they continue to evaluate that and continue to look at that, that that fund, other new lands that are sold for economic development are inclusive into the sniplama as it moves forward or into the future. But again, we're hopeful for our neighboring and sister counties across the state and that their wishes are are adhered to in the in the fund or in the bill and that we appreciate Congressman Amade and what he does for us every day here in Churchill County. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Linda?
Well, legislation, of course, we're continuing our talks and hopefully that'll be done quick. Also, delinquent property taxes, still plugging along with that. Next month, we'll be doing a mock election. And this will be a like a three-day mock election. And the purpose that we're doing this is because we're testing new election equipment. The and then the software for voter registration, all the changes in that, that's also what we will be testing. So this is good. We'll have probably another couple, too, this year in doing those processes.
Thank you. Crystal? Pam? Under Sheriff? Thank you, guys. Okay, with that, claims and payroll are going around. At this time, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we stand adjourned. Thank you, guys.